Surround you. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God. Any public comments? Our favorite attendees are here. There are public comments. If you want to approach it, it might pick up more.
Remember the crosswalks? I put really above the painting, the crosswalks. I don't know whether that's, you know, on the drawing board in terms of being interested, but it's not everybody's best interest. Repainted. And then when the order will be on track, it doesn't even keep the one that's feeding on chest.
You're seeing it on chest that way down towards Main Street?
Have you seen it on Main Street? The sun. For some people. That's an indicator to slow down and who knows, people may say, okay, all right, let me see if I can, you know, get 45 or 47 miles per hour. Okay, wrap it. Beautiful place. It's a beautiful place.
Thank you. No, we enjoy and appreciate these comments. So thank you very much. And yeah, I'm going to make sure that your committee follows up on crosswalks and I'll speak to Frank. Um, correspondence. I think we all received an email from Glenn Fox pertaining to the trailers on Fish Road. I think those of us who've been on the board for a while realized what was going on, which was a bass tournament. Sometimes as many as, is it picking it up? As many as three, you know, a season with some staffing changes. It was approved. The police did know about it. There's only two this summer and it happened to be yesterday. Weekend on a 90 degree day when everybody wants to leave. I think one thing that's important to remember is you have E post slips. And we have less, we have about 37 parking spaces. So there is no guarantee that everyone will always find a parking place. But next year in the future, we will make sure that all board kind of weighs in on those bass tournament applications. Because there might be recommendations like uh, make sure that all the trailers could actually park on village property at the top of Fish Road. On the grass. And so, yes. Yeah, that is, it's those who kind of were able to participate in the village tour this year. We actually pointed out survey pins, which we had surveyed done of Lakefront about four years ago. And the fish house stood there where we bought that property for Fish Road and the boat access, so to speak. And we're about three or four inches off the adjacent building to. So that is all village property that potentially could, it would be a discussion, but there are ways to accommodate. In front of the. It is. And I will also mention that to our police department. And sort of orally early, orally, they hired a part-time CEO, an IT and IR CEO. They're really focusing kind of on Main Street because we have a new local pay gap for the hard day parking. And they're, you know, just want to make sure that that gets in their mail. And they have not been controlling this road adequately. Remember it's two hour parking on Fish Road unless you have a boat slip and display that on your dashboard. Or unless you have a boat inspection. And that was boat steward inspection for Henry. And that was noted on the permit, but. You can't park on, you cannot park trailers on our streets.
But what they do is if we're trailers against the motel and trucks across. I thought, well, I would first just consider having the trailers a little bit of a little.
That, that's always consideration. I, I don't want anyone to walk into this. Well, honestly, I, I don't know. I just mentioned before that I shared a part saying that about 2014 or 15. This is, you know, with the attorney, et cetera, put together a local law not to have trailers on Fish Road. And let me tell you, that was one interesting public hearing. We had people, you know, coming out of the woodwork, it's D E C and state officials here. The village did receive funds for the park prior before any of us were all American. So it is very much public access and they've implicated restricting voters and access. And as a matter of fact, when it was apparent to us, because they brought the news clips and et cetera, that in 1990, the same thing had been tried. So about every 15, 20 years at each time, I just want to warn anyone willing to pick up that battle sword and run with it.
No, no.
But we could, that's what we were trying to do, get peripheral parking of the trailers. And then we said it allows more access to the lake, more vehicles to be there. I think one thing we also don't want to do, and that's overreact them on an incident. There'll be one more test and it's on October 27th. And I can guarantee you the demand for parking on Fish Road will not be high on October 27th.
It also might be helpful to have plans that says we're starting on Saturday or, you know, getting before the parliament. The justice thing is not going to be for me because I tried to park on Fish Road yesterday and I saw the all of it. Yeah, perhaps. Uh, yeah, there's a permit.
Yeah, the permit they go to, which, so they were aware of it. Unfortunately, it didn't get well communicated because we would have put it on our Facebook or on our webpage. There would have been much more transmission of that again, and it's second one of the October 22nd we'll do it, but I guarantee it will be.
Yeah, the other thing to think about also, if there's no, I mean, I'm not really. I would love to have more parking down the corners, but if there are, if there's no trailer parking down there, then you also have, you rather it's like congestion of both. Being pulled out of the water and then voters perhaps their votes and flips may not be able to move around and things like that. And that might very, very quickly become an issue because of having to go get the trailer, bring it back, you know, all these different things.
I'm thinking the logistics of that. I think if you launch, and many times these are singles, sometimes two people in those vans. But we really only have maybe two space tie up there. And so they've launched them, they're leaving their, they're very expensive boats. They're not driving up the risk, unhit you, coming back, parking. And in the meantime, other people would fly along if they would need to get more down. And so I'll make sure that they're also really observing the boat trailers you mentioned. You saw them on Main Street. All right, we do have a public hearing this evening on our two CFA applications. We have several permits. The first one is an application to use the village park, Harry Spring by American Fireworks. For fireworks or a wedding of the Yoda saga on Saturday, July 9th. From 4:30 to 12, the use of the park. It's sometimes is noted if they, they.
Yes, they did.
They did say the 4:50.
Yeah, the check in after.
So the 4:50 was a, this company routinely, you could see that it's a $350 cleanup damage deposit. And it's been at 30 sprint and they just, you know, returned. So it's 350 to the park. So 4:50. They were, question of motion.
One is that I think when we get the fire department permit, we should make sure that the fire department is getting notified. Because I'm not sure that that always happens. And two, I haven't heard how much just now people love their park and love access to the park. Notifying the fireworks company that allowing the park to remain open until it's moved.
They usually do, but you know what? We don't want anything to slip through the cracks. So that's great. There is Cindy's motion to approve with those stipulations that the fire department noted. That the park still remains open for access and dust. So motion made, seconded by Joe, all in favor. Moving on, application to use village property, Village Street for the law enforcement work run on Sunday. August 4th, it would be arriving, I guess, at 12:00, he thought about between 10:00 and 10:30 a.m. And I noted that it wouldn't really be able to access the field, but what he envisioned was maybe having some refreshments for them. At a table on the island there by the sandlot, people to take pictures there if they wanted. And then they would proceed down. Any questions or comments? Your motion. All right, Cindy seconded by, Cindy, all in favor. Application for a sign permit, not to Ian, 124th Main Street on all things weekend. For Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and Monday. That's what I noticed right off of that. It's four days. So I think we got some discussion on this one. Cindy, I know you were quite involved when we did our noise ordinance. What are yours?
Well, I, I wasn't clear.
What they're doing?
Yeah.
Yeah, me neither.
I mean, seriously, but, but when it comes to sound stuff, there's several different processes we go through. And so if we're just issuing a sound comment, then it needs to stay below 88 decibels. And they need to be well aware that the 20.
It's not a variance. It's permanent. So it's got to be below 88.
And then so maximum three occurrence is per location per calendar week. So I guess they're asking for the 22nd, the 23rd, and the 25th. And not Sunday, the 24th. That was the way that I read.
Okay, I would say you're wrong.
And then maximum four hours per occurrence. I guess that's from one to five. I mean, so I, I think if they stay below the 88 decibels and they limit it to those three days and those four hours per day, then they mess the letter of the law. And I mean, I will think for them for actually applying because my guess is there will be lots of other people who are vying with the noise ordinance. And they don't put in an application.
Yeah, no, that is not like it's going to be consistent that I didn't get this sentence, you know, they're doing some speaking. But then of course you have to get, get them in and they'll be announcing them. So. All right, with the parameters that Cindy was discussing there.
So three days and 20 seconds to 23, there's like that, no other four hours per day for one five. And they need it to be below, below 88.
Yeah, and they did permit to say that. So they do see that on there.
I'm assuming that the 25th is the event duration of the 1 to 5 might be the.
Well, it is, what it is confusing to me, are there going to be two shifts of four hours? I don't know what the relevance is at 10:00 a.m.
Right.
To 1:00 p.m. It could sound, the noise.
Well, it's maximum duration of four hours per occurrence. So they can only.
And that's what we can specify in the comments.
Yeah, they would be specified on, you know, five, you know.
For those three things.
And there are two passing parameters. Cindy has made the motion. Ensuring we knew the time.
Yeah, I just have a clarification. Can there be, I don't know if there is an efficient, maybe. It couldn't be that they'll have four hours scattered over that period of 25 or whatever it is 10 to 5.
I think it needs to be 1 to 5.
But we don't know what their interest is.
Well, I think that's why they wrote 1 to 5 underneath.
Yeah, they want, they have four elements. They probably read that.
I was just going to suggest, well, it isn't possible that they have to be active on this. Oh, then what is it? What, what do they want the permit to be? 1 to 5, 10 to 5? No, it could be 10 to 11 to 2, yeah, it could be, they could be discontinuous. So it's.
I would do it that way. I would do it that way because then we are to prioritize things. Because it becomes a little iffy up until when we approve something and, you know, that happened with that film series. I, I don't want to have those phone calls again. So whatever we approve is, is it, you know, there can't be kind of negotiations.
I understand. So what is it? They can, this cannot occur for one to four hours.
So which four hours?
Yeah, so what four hours do you want?
All right, so the motion was made, that was the clarification seconded by Joe, all in favor. This is a request that has, after Mike, notes have been received by the village since 2006. And this involves, if that's what we can, the line 22nd through 24th. That the first, first time on the street would put a, like a standing toward sign up in the triangle by, that's not true. And their motion, moved by Joe, seconded by Sydney, all in favor. All those abstaining. So I'm voting on that one.
Okay. Yep.
We have review of minutes for the May 23rd meeting. I know. And minor changes, if Cindy, oh, she wasn't here. Made a note that she wasn't here. Is there a motion to approve those minutes as of right? By Joe, seconded by Sydney, all in favor. We have our zoning official report. You all received digitally the minutes of the H R and planning board meeting. There was no ZDA. So is there any comments that anybody wants to make about anything? Do you not feel accepting zoning officials report? By Cindy, seconded by Joe, all in favor.
The only reason I want to point out for the fire department is that we think it's really important to put up a sign. Outside of their, the entrance to their. Person walking back that suggested there's a fine for blocking that. They've had a lot of issues with delivery trucks blocking that area. And it's pretty awkward with drugs on the street. And so like essentially they have delivery trucks. Blocking it this way. They've tried to on numerous occasions have, not any pictures. I think that Glenn may have taken a couple of pictures. Yeah. 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 And I know that they have tried like numerous times to actually tell the drivers that they're blocking the fire department. Which it's not just parking. There's also a permit back there that, you know, you would need to use that space to be able to get it out. So it is a matter of public safety. And for the last two months, the drivers have been getting more and more hostile. And when you think sometimes with that, I know there's also issues with not being able to get a police officer there fast enough to be able to write up a ticket. So hoping that a sign would, at least there was some sense of how much a fine would be. So I'd like to say that Martin's here. Yeah, I don't know that you can post the signs or just. Oh, okay.
Okay, yeah. So let me go a little bit with you. I know in. Signage, which I think signs that say, you know, people find law and who block driveway. That is part of vehicle and traffic law. That's fine. But they will be a fine with $100. That would, we would have to do a separate village law to, to set that type of parameter up to. Which is definitely.
Whereas we already provided.
Right. But right now, they're citing vehicle and traffic law. 1202. Dash two dash point D. And that has an amount from zero to 150.
Okay, that's near.
Right, yeah.
We can tick it under our own ordinance. We already have it.
Oh, whereas ours that's.
There's a general penalty section. Ordinance allows any violation to be ticked and combined up to, I think it's 250 or 350. No, you already said you can't block a driveway, can't park in front of any driveway, which is hardly what that is. And there is a general penalty section that I believe has a maximum penalty. If you want to change the maximum.
All right, but right now you think it's.
I'm pretty sure it's a minimum of 250, not a minimum, but I know that at least it goes to 250 and it may go higher. I can tell you. It is, it's in the general.
Yeah. What we cannot do though, there'll be a $500,000 plus points. Only the DMV can do points. We can't do points on anybody's driver's license.
Yeah, good question on, on the breach report, the thirty one, two, four. What's, what is harassment, uh, in this context, there were three harassers. Uh, are they akin to assaults, or?
Hmm, not necessarily, it's, where are you, where are you, it can, it can be just argumentative, it's someone's face with no purpose. If you have a legitimate purpose, it's not harassment, or it's determined to be after the hearing and trial, uh, that it was done without a legitimate purpose, if you were upset because someone was blocking your driveway and you were screaming at them, it's probably not harassment, you have a purpose, but if you're just, I'm walking down the street minding my own business, and you don't like bald headed guys, I can say that to you, and you come on screaming at me, probably is not going to be a legitimate, that's with harassment, I, I know it's one of those, I was involved with it, where somebody that was upset with, uh, a neighbor, and just kind of went off on them, and really without a lot of certainty. So, they, they ended up, you know, hanging up.
Okay, so there is no sign there, currently, you say, or?
There is, I have, uh. It's standard, you're not allowed to block this driveway, but like, you know, but it doesn't say anything about fine, nothing like that. I don't even know if the word prohibited is used on there, I feel like it's the last, I don't know if it is or not, but, um, but it definitely doesn't have anything that suggests that there would be a fine, uh, for doing so, and it's under, I mean, you know, we're hoping that that might at least discourage some.
No, I, I think, I think that's, that's an idea.
Plus, working with the.
I do, working. What is happening? Under village code, we can, oh, you didn't want to carry your, your, I'll get it up, um, then. Let you. Check it out. Um, with the computer, there's always computer, that's the, I think. All right, and so we need, um, so we will use, how we're going to come up with the wording, we're going to see what it is, hopefully.
Yeah, I, I'm not, I'm not sure, this is something that I just, I'll come to the wording and then come back.
I think probably we'll look at this, um, I think that definitely through a sign tonight, um, you know, according to our village code when it's asked. Um, and then put it as a fine or a offense.
Yeah.
I will say, um, you know, in the eleven years I've been on the board, that the, um, the thing that we pointed out on our village tour, that the adjacent buildings have been well put, they own well.
Right, right.
I think at some point, we may have to do, whether it's post, been attracted, or change something, I think we may have to designate founder, because to a lot of people, they get, they park, they park on essentially the property there when they pull in, they're parked, you know, in that area.
Yeah, I think that's the other thing, there is that loading bell, carry on, you know, there's one, so this is really, and, and, you know, everyone at Mel's is all implied of the fire department, that no truck should be blocking your driveway, I think a lot of, you know, but, um, to unload their inventory, they would have to then take it and cart it around the, especially in the summer, I think this is what's happening on the house, there's thousands getting, and they have to get around the outskirts getting the other side, and I think it'd be. Mel's is made very aware of the situation.
Yeah.
Realign the statement, yeah. There was. Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
Would it, would it help to yellow strike the, drive in front of the firehouses? Of this one people, I mean, it's a very vital question for the.
There is sort of faded yellow open town, and probably it could be.
I think that's what we're seeing, I think that.
It's a few.
Be helpful in. The worst part is where the loading belt is. But, I mean, I just think that's really clear, this is not a fire, right, or, you know.
But it is fair warning, if they mark it, and then.
Yeah. Right.
Right, so you're still unification.
Okay.
Yeah, we, we may, but I think we've got basically, um, approval for a sign. Um, and it'll list that it's a fineable offense, um, if we ascertain the amount, if we say it's two, so, yeah. And it would be, it would work with, or the, um, fine. They have to install. Um, any other questions on public safety or fire department? Um, motion to accept those reports, by Joe, seconded by Sydney, all in favor. It is now, um, seven o'clock, hello. I'm, you know, open with, with, um, pertaining to the village, to the town, applying for, uh, to C F A, now, okay, to write the leaders' committees.
Yeah.
Um, and, why don't you speculate what they are, and you can go ahead and talk about some.
Yeah, for, for.
Okay.
So there is money within the DMV through the, through the nation's project plan, water officials. And so the water department has been looking at updating the, their reading tonight, that goes with our water meter, um, currently, some of them they have to read by actually dwelling in the meter, and some of them they can read from a truck in time of the year, but there are new water meters in the state, that there would be constant monitoring. Uh, and one of the reasons for that is that we all know that people develop leaks, and they find us, have about a month later, and they come to us, he says, there's a little fire. Which is bad, but it also means that a lot of water damage too as well, and so you can set these new meters, so that if there's an unusual usage, you would know in hours, or at, you know, at worst days, as opposed to months down the road that something is going to mess, and it would help people identify things that are not at home, it would help us identify things going on in our lives as well. So, that's, uh, that's what I, for instance, about Delaware Engineering, we'll be talking later about their proposals, right? That particular one, because it requires a, an engineering report, so I can't imagine an engineering report for that sort of like water meters would like, but it follows the same format as any other.
And then the other one is, uh, one that was pushed in last year and not funded, and that is, um, to the nearest state parks. We had received a grant in, this was the twentieth, so we had, we have received, um, oh, it must have been nineteen, because that was, they did not have C F A, uh, they were, and, um, to, uh, have a design for sort of an accessible viewing platform at Lakefront Park, basically at the foot of Pioneer Street. Um, and, you know, with kind of water quality issues addressed, as well as support signage and et cetera. And so that grant was about a thirty thousand dollar grant to do the design and engineering, which was completed, and then last year, we did apply, using those construction drawings for funding to support the, the potential construction of that type of, um, viewing platform, and that was not funded. So we are going to submit again, um, check to see what, uh, could make it stronger, and, uh, we'll follow up with that. But those are the two CFAs we'll be putting in.
I really will probably pull this open, but one thing I would like us to do tonight in regard to the water meter, is to make a declaration about that, because that allows us to check out.
Yes, and that was the onus that the village had to do, was to prioritize all that Delaware one, yeah.
Want me to go ahead and make the motion?
Yeah, as long as we're in this, yeah.
So I would make a motion to classify the replacement of water meters as a type of reaction. On their number six, one seven point five, what is the number three of the D road, that you, which says requisite in an existing structure in an apparent area to incorporate green infrastructure.
Extend that text directly to.
Yeah, remember, I got this section, no.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So there she is, taking those and seconding by Joe. Um, I'll be back, I'll be back in a minute, moving on, other committee reports, double date advice.
So our biggest action, I don't recommend it, is, uh, my name is, I'm out of the super, all of you, with some suggestions to be part of science, or entire room, in the. And we talked about, you know, some of the things that people might feel have a black, that it is a foul, and I think the government would like to donate a thousand dollars to that entire room.
Was it, literally talking about fifteen at some point? Um. Got it, got it.
Um. So I thought that it's, 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 it's one of those, I, one of that, looks like, I don't know, yes. Other people have suggestions on the wording, um, I'd like to be able to bring something back to the committee for July eleventh, and get that rolling, so, I don't know if that's something that people want to look at tonight, or workshop it at some point, but it's very strong. I think I, I like number three and number one. Sydney, would you not touch me on that, I just, I'm. If you get a, I.
I, I consider that, I'm like, number one, because, um, knowing of this, you know, nearly three million dollar building, that one room is probably more than ten thousand another, um, so I'd like the generously donated in part of the grants that are already.
I think it's also very.
Yeah, it's distinct, you're right.
Could we do, this is a part of such a undercutting thing, how about a contribution? If we're in a, acknowledge that we're giving a place for, then they'll have to have all of it. It was, it was a contribution to the, the entire, right? And then part of it wasn't a generous donation.
Let's work with number one, and, and you, um, are sort of having to provide this to Jeff, so send him sort of this and say, the verb you can be tweet, let's not worry about it tonight, so I think that's great, and then, um.
Um, yeah, so that's my little tour, if we want to add any more details, or more detail, or, is it, what do you say, memory of?
I'd say reset memory of the donors.
And then what do we feel about?
I would, I would strike long time, but I'm fine trying to double that field for the years.
I don't mind long time.
Well, the, the numbers would say so.
Probably aren't.
I would suggest putting the years of the association.
With.
With a few, and that's where you know.
Okay. See, I thought it was worth that, I know, I know.
Well, if it won't be a, you see, with the years.
Yeah.
Well, it is.
I was going to say, I don't. I mean, if we put it after, well, we're like. Yeah, I know, that suggests that, yeah, and that anyone knows.
In order of how long the report is, long service is on fire in front of the.
I wouldn't know, and I could, you probably. Because we have no affiliation, remember, with the umpires, we don't pay them, we do nothing to them, so we've been, at least up to that association. Or you might find that someone in the third dollar committee for a while, I don't know if there's that, but, um, that might be, they might actually present that to me.
The, oh.
It's basically, um, yeah.
Just very, very long, I mean, I. So I'll come back to you guys.
Yes, basically, don't want the door or the brick. Some ways the door is nice, but, because the lighters don't, you have the images now. All right. Anything else on double date meeting?
It is, we're having trouble, it's under obstructive use of the rich property, is this section?
What is this section?
Uh, the two forty. In the maximum penalty. If anyone, plus, the street sidewalks, um, and we take a, maximum fine.
So potentially that could go on this.
Right, right.
All right, so motion to accept the double date committee report, by Joe, seconded by Tom up on the favor.
Are we giving the multi?
I mean, I'm getting the truth.
I know, I know. All right. It has to do with the, so I did practice, the, 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 today, and I'll, this is a view, a, a general idea of numbers, you know. Sort of look at things, but it appears that we are about double where we were last year, but keep in mind, we didn't run for half of last year. And we are at about half what we were in two thousand nine. So, somewhere in the middle between almost no traffic last month, and what was our best year?
Okay, so we're talking June two thousand twenty two.
Yeah, June two thousand twenty two is at about, at this point, two thousand.
Two thousand.
It was at twelve hundred last year, and that was for Columbus, and it was at about five thousand.
But those were less than half of two thousand and two.
Yeah, so, Matt's suggestion is that he agrees that having a regular trial, second trolley run, there's. Like, wondering if the water companies will consider authorizing, over the course of the season, fifty additional. fifty additional hours that you could block in like the middle of the day if there happens to be a busy day. The whole thing is further complicated by the Dream Spark schedule, which now isn't a seven day a week schedule, but a six day a week schedule. You know, depending on turnover days, two days before turnover day tends to be the busiest day, but some weeks are using. So so that, that's what he asked me for today, whether we would authorize that additional time. I, he did talk very seriously about the fact that gas is up tremendously. So we're not just talking about extra right, you know, driver time that we would need to be paying for, but also the fuel that would be used in a, in a village so far, it hasn't been an issue. Could it potentially be an issue in July and some others, and induction weekend can be done all over the trolley? Or in August, you know, I, it's just hard to tell.
But that, so we're assuming the extra hours will be offset by sufficient weather, is it going to be demanded really?
It, it, yes, it would, it'd be, in his mind, it would be demanded that we get to the point where people can't all sit on a trolley and be followed as a driver.
What's your thinking?
I'm hesitant. I, I don't think, so, so just in terms of finances. In twenty nineteen, which was our, our best year in several years, we owed the county four thousand dollars for the trolley. Plus we paid for gas, plus we paid for fortifications, but I mean, that was a fairly successful, not quite repeated year. Last year, if we hadn't through SOA got special COVID money, we would have owes the county twenty-three thousand dollars, plus the fortifications, plus the gas. As it was still on the state transportation money, you know, went back to the two thousand nineteen number of the it's actually worked out better for us last year and the past. I don't think that's gonna happen again this year. And I'm just, I'm hesitant. Because it's almost impossible to know what the numbers are gonna be, to go crazy with authorizations for additional time that we're gonna end up paying for in terms of driving time and in terms of fuel. We should, I might, we're getting more SOA funding, we have more people and more, more miles.
So I'm, I'm wanting to hear. People lining up for their, for the one trolley. That's optimal for us because we'll get maximum use out of one trolley. Not everybody, but it's sure, but everybody we buy will be delivered in, okay. The problem with the second trolley is that that may only run four. And that's where the expense falls out of line with.
Right.
Really.
Has he thought that there's been days where they were close? Not yet, no.
Well, how much lead time does he need here? Can we wait?
On July maybe, I think it's then.
October and then it could be long. But he's thinking July.
He's thinking like it's the fourth of July, he's willing to.
And can we allocate the risk if we do that? I mean, how do we, how do we hedge?
I mean, the problem with the trolley suspension, but we always have to. Financial risk.
Well, probably not.
I mean, I suppose we could always say if after the second, well, I mean, in that should we go, we're gonna have a kind of trolley.
It's, it's local, yeah.
So that's already in the line for. Yeah, I'll, I know. How to calculate.
I mean, if we wanted to reduce the rest, we could say.
Twenty-five hours.
Or, or even, or even in July, you could go up to ten hours. And then we visit in July and maybe there may be a ten day complaint.
Yeah. Making that motion.
We'll make a motion to authorize ten hours of three, three between now and our next meeting.
Motion made by Cindy, seconded by Joe, all in favor, all in.
Anything else? The only thing that I will bring up, just in terms of initial, if you, if you read this. So the, the plaque discussion was from this group and, and sidewalk. Chris, uh, Batry, I was, that's probably a very critical point. And that is that where you see these flags in heart with, in your first leg, they're on nicely utility hall, which are very tall. Our messengers are not very solid, it would probably be impossible to mount a flag on that would get taken out by large trucks that people do are voting at. It's probably not a favorable solution, even if we get a board that extra.
Also gone there, there was a question of whether the trolley contract gets signed, it was signed before, during two thousand thirteen. The county has now moved to all their contracts are online. And the tenant that did not ever let me know she sent it, and because of the size of it, it died in our social security of it. And it, and so when she did say, did you get it? I would get, oh, and it's gone. Because it was completed by that point. Um, but she did send it in a public signature, so that was all completely diolite and like. All online now.
And the last one is discussion, it goes on the lamp post.
They go to the fixtures are looking rough.
The basement of the
Of all our, all our lamp posts? Yeah, I think we did too. I think people always shovel again.
And we did, and so the basements are cast iron, so they're rough, or we're in the back or aluminum, so we won't. Proper. Right, Cindy, can you bring up?
Um, or did you want to do it on your new business around the, the discussion about Bieber Street?
I think we'll get up now.
Also new streets.
So this morning at the breakfast of the board, the blowers bring in the question about the requirement on their block. Those these streets, they were lost or we had participated all company between time and and. And they certainly understand the need for that, which is a very big reason. They have, they have new curves, so you can't get too close, and it really does reflect it. But their request was perhaps that prescription could apply for Monday through Friday, but on Saturday and Sunday, when there is less work traffic, we might consider allowing. That would require a public hearing, which I could step. Because people are vulnerable. I feel like I should say anything to constitute. You're pointing out the word.
Okay.
Yeah.
You should know that was less on Saturday.
Not really, because there's so much hospital going to the traffic, so like.
Hospital. I obviously, the third trip.
I mean, down there, like I know, I have seen a lot of almost passing because of running on Bieber Street, which I think around.
Right, but this came up for discussion previously, and we've always said that the biggest, essentially they're going one block, they turn off Chestnut, and they should stop at a stop sign. And it doesn't always happen, we get a lot of picks there. Um, or they see the last moment, it's pushing the brake. A traffic calming thing is cars parked on a street is the way they look at it, because otherwise people are picking up.
You can wait a month, we can talk about it. You can talk about it at public safety, because I, I feel like the emergency flood certainly might have some way input in terms of going down Bieber Street.
Looking at code.
We, I mean, we could look at the numbers from what's the E S one is, they're not that early. I think it's also visibility from driveway and pulling out, being able to actually make that turn safely, because because there's, there's been a congestion, possibly people tend to go a bit faster. I don't know if that would help or if that would impair. I mean, can we allow, I mean, at the six? Okay, not, not, not a portion, it's not a half portion of.
Down towards the. Yeah, in the block between Denver and Chestnut, which is, Bieber's actually wider than here. It was.
There is very well, you know, parking sometimes, but a lot.
The parking of, the parking of vehicles is forbidden between time and, and six p.m. So already allowed, but you, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
But then we're looking for it on Saturdays on the day, like all of them.
Yeah, right.
Yes, not restricted to the nine a.m.
But it's gonna be interesting to know when people enter park there in the evening and how that impact. I, I know, I've seen a lot of cars parked from Downing Street. And if we were to do that, I would say we definitely need a signage that says one end of the street parking. We have those both sides of the street parking.
Most current, it must be, it doesn't seem like it would.
But I'd say years ago, we did that.
Amazing to me.
So now we're the traffic.
No, we had a little bit of.
There was a request.
I think that's a good suggestion, let's let it go back to strings, let's let it be talked about that on late maybe, and so this stuff. Next, Mark. Okay, motion to accept streets meeting report. By Joe, seconded by Lana, all in favor. I'm going to close the public hearing for the U C S. We could go ahead and. Motion made, seconded by Joe, all in favor. Thank you. Um, moving on, buildings committee.
Um, so I think the most pressing matter on here concerns the library. I know that she was like to look into allowing a camera system within the library space of parents, we, we are considering our building. But they would fund it, it would be their system. Um, she's concerned that lines of sight there are not especially good and that her staff is sometimes unaware of people within the state um, and people within the state who need assistance. Before she invested a lot of time in doing research and policy development and seeking funding, she wanted to get that before.
I spoke with her this morning, and I thought she thought through this very carefully. And the interest of her being effective. It's a wonderful building, it's a wise and quiet. As, as it would be in a, in a design building, so she had operated the reasons that persuade me that we should at least have.
I think we have to confirm we're fully in support if she's going to go through the effort of applying for this grant and this, you know, creating the policy, which would be, you know, we should also review the policy.
I did look at the American Library Association, other sites, I do, yeah, last one, yeah, last one, really have. There's, there's a lot out there, um, policies and guidance. Yeah, so.
All right, so is there a motion that the village board supports the application for funding by the library to purchase cameras to have in the library, and they'll also be creating a policy which will, among other factors, stipulate retention. Is, is renewed retention. So I'll make that motion, seconded by Joe, all in favor.
Um, the other thing that I would like you to know on the second sheet, because this is a change, I'm meeting, it's a third floor window break. I, in speaking further, within the art association, they would actually like to put off that decision. But the director is considering other options, that they include things like reduce since that, that we keep the above out, and they also provide just enough of a barrier, so more investigation.
Yeah, and it seemed to be the greatest expense that would ultimately be I asked, because we were. So, and I, it didn't seem to be worth it.
They, they, they don't write back.
Yeah, I think these are a great idea for parts of the books, I do think that there is a great factor because people sit on the wide ledges and, you know, we don't want them to come laying out. And there are always.
Um, and then the last thing, we are ready to go in for the third floor window replacement.
Motion made by Cindy, seconded by Joe, all in favor. So we'll sit down, maybe.
Any questions about this?
I think it would be good if you just kind of reviewed it from the record that it is. Did you review the potential donation of a large scale vehicle? Did you know if the art association?
I did speak to the art association.
Okay.
So we were offered a large control email. And it really don't have, they, and it really doesn't have.
So, in the first few minutes, no, thank you, will, um. Right, motion to accept the buildings committee report. By Joe, seconded by Sydney, all in favor. Community and environment.
We have been hearing all about renewable energy, for, and things like solar and hydro, and here several. I believe that we are ready to move forward with a reservation on which involves a contract. This has been had as one of the anchors in a community solar project that's looking in, in person, you know. Through the company, next, and we have asked them lots of questions. They have incorporated some of our environmental concerns. We have asked them lots of questions, they have incorporated some of our environmental concerns in the contract itself. Many of the others we discovered were already addressed by New York State in permitting practice. And there are two reasons to do this. One is because using solar energy is good for the environment. The other is that this gives us solar credits that should save us 11.25% on the distribution charges on our electric. Which when you consider our 24 electrical years is a pretty substantial, potentially pretty.
And the third component is it lets us check off more boxes. Which is very important, you know, in a climate smart, I mean, energy community. It can open up potentially more funding.
So is there any follow up from that, when you were talking about.
So they actually, their lawyers incorporated the language about herbicide and pesticides directly into the contract, which eliminated the need for an exit. So I would make a motion to authorize the mayor to sign the credit purchase of that with next for community solar in.
Motion made by Cindy, seconded by Tiffany, all in favor.
Great.
Yeah. No, we got it. The, uh, I thought the, yeah. There would be a. Community environment, I think so, so motion to accept. Community environment, um, may report. By. Now where that pressure. And jump.
Thank you. Um, in your packet you have our retirement, our W S A S waiver for May. The finance committee reviewed the back up affiliations for May, close our version meeting. The sales tax report, you'll see that, um, having budgeted $310,000 on three year, this past fiscal year being. Are actually now in in receipts at $370,000. In our forecast, that goes to the last month, we have one more month of information to receive in the country. We would forecast to have received 423,000 instead of 310,000. There's a mortgage tax. Document that you have reflects year over year and that has had you receive the wholesale. Your classes on mortgages. And as you can see, we budgeted for 21, 22. $30,000 in revenues and we are at 51,001,000. We need to, as you know, we completed the renovations of our sewer treatment point and then one of the electronic. Devices failed and it was flooded. All of the damage that occurred is covered by insurance, but we have to transgress, we we will reimburse these expenses. We need to remove 206,888 dollars and ninety two cents for the sewer line equipment there to make those flood repairs. That is account G dash B130 dash four eight, all of that will be reimbursed from the authority.
Correct. Yeah.
Perfect.
Yeah, just. There is a second by Indian all in favor.
So we, uh, Cooper Douglas, uh, got the invoices for several invoices, we've guarded any insurance agreements and I went through these. I moved the approval of number six oh seven one eight five, the amount of eight thousand five hundred fifty five.
And we're doing them all individually?
Well, it's, it's appropriate to do the number. I'll just run through them all and then. The second invoice is number six oh seven one eighty nine, twenty seven five dollars. And the details of all of these. Specifically, we're. For the purpose. Invoice number six oh seven one seven five, the amount of 50,000, one hundred and forty dollars. Invoice number six oh seven one eight six, the amount of 10,970 dollars and forty cents. Invoice number six oh seven one nine zero, the amount of 17,000, 20,000, 30 cents. Invoice number six oh seven one eight three, the amount of 14,000, 40 dollars, 90 cents. And invoice number six oh seven one eight seven, the amount of 8,020 dollars.
And motion made to approve of those invoices by Joe, seconded by Cindy, all in favor.
Um, the next items are parking associated costs. We have an invoice number eight seven nine one, the amount of 1,318 dollars and two cents for parking and ticket stock. Now just note, think about that, that's the paper. The paper. 1,300 dollars.
For the receipt that you put on your.
Yes. Um, invoice number eight seven seven four, the amount of nine thousand for the maintenance agreement. Now, this is, this is for the year from May one, June, and April thirty, May one, June, June, through April thirty. And invoice number eight seven seven four, the amount of 78,000 dollars. The monthly art portfolio subscription. That's a bit of this younger, this younger period. Build twenty twenty two, build May twenty. That'll be on pay. And I move.
Motion made by Joe, seconded by Anna, all in favor.
So can I interrupt to do the partial numbers?
Yes.
So last year in, on June 26th, this is the night of this, we ran about 53,000 dollars. This year, as of June 26th, I have to do two fingers, right? One for the meters and one for the app. So the meters were at 73,480 dollars and 45 cents. The app, um, the gross was 11,411 dollars. The net is 10,118 dollars and 50 cents.
Maybe five thousand versus.
Versus 53.
I think it's a 56.
53. Sorry, I said.
That's great. I think we can all tell that we're much busier downtown than you were.
Well, I have a following currently of the capital project, the payment applications. I'm maybe. First on the Skylight project, invoice number eight K, invoice number three sixteen, the amount of 850 dollars and 60 cents. I did not. It didn't work.
The charterer should have done that because that wasn't completely fine. So generally, copies of the law as part of the.
You didn't get one in your package.
I didn't see it. But if we have it, then I will.
So it's 3016, the invoice number 4850 dollars.
Motion made by Joe, seconded by Cindy, all in favor.
Um, the double day field, Delaware Engineering Professional Services, invoice number 20, in the amount of 16,480 dollars and 31 cents.
Second by Anna, all in favor.
Uh, double day field, Delaware Engineering Professional Services, invoice number 19, the amount of 2,230 dollars.
Second by Anna, all in favor.
Double day field, this may be invoice under 16, that's one D dash zero eight four dash twenty four, the amount of 16,300.
Second by Anna, all in favor.
Uh, the double day field, the bank of all payout, issue number 11, in the amount of 171,000.
Okay. Second by Anna, all in favor.
Uh, the double day field, Skyler cost application number six, in the amount of 90, 40, 50 dollars.
Second by Anna, all in favor.
The wastewater treatment plant, Delaware Engineering Professional Services, invoice number 67, in the amount of 2,462 dollars and 31 cents.
Second by Cindy, all in favor.
All right. The Grove Street COVID, Delaware Engineering Professional Services, invoice number 15, in the amount of 3,495 dollars.
Second by Cindy, all in favor.
Uh, the Grove Street COVID project, pre-construction payout, application number one, in the amount of 139,000, the amount of 30 dollars, 70 cents.
So Joe, you wanted to say, can you do the final contract?
Well, we have, I brought Mitch Smith and.
Which everybody.
Yeah, I believe there is a couple of, um, forms, one. Thanks, so I move the approval of the pre-construction payout number one.
Okay, motion made by Joe, seconded by Cindy, all in favor.
And, um, the Grove Street COVID, Delaware Construction Chamber, number three. An increase in the amount of 5,000, the amount of 52 dollars and 50 cents.
Second by Cindy, all in favor.
And we have, um, the overtime analysis in my kit. And the, the change transaction for regarding. Performance and hours of the. The employees, which is. You maintain the culture of that. We have in your packet, um, conference and training requests, for our pleasure that getting the non-credit training. And that's the month from September 12th to 16, 2022, cost about 1,555 dollars.
Motion made by Joe, seconded by Cindy, all in favor.
And we are, we also have a conference and training request for one of our two first hire on March 9th for my comp, full training conference, September 12th to 16, 2022. That fee would be 1,729 dollars and ninety two cents, and I move the approval.
Second by Anna, all in favor.
And it is, uh. With great appreciation for his service and dedication. I want to report that Dennis Kelly is retiring as of July 42nd from his operator of the. Personally, I, when I first started here, um, as a member of the water and sewage, the greatest mentor and, um. I see them in action all around the villages every time of day, doing every manner of path associated with the. The water treatment plan, um, and I'm sure, from my advice, I wish him all the best and.
100% Dennis is our longest serving employee, this marks 35 years, started in 1987. And he's kind of this. Premalist but excited about starting this next step of his life. Um, I believe he's pretty much working up to July 22nd or would be taking some vacation. The only reason I am, I would like, I think it'd be important for us to have a reception, you know, just here in the office or wherever and make sure that. You should be anyone who wants because he really is someone who, um, we really rely on our employees to, you know, represent the village well and he has kind of done that. So we need to do that, you know, so we can sort of commemorate his retirement. So, um, I guess I will, you know, follow up with Nick, you know, we, if it was. What has technically might work for people and probably would be late afternoon or 3:30 or 4:00 so that other employees would be able after their work day, you can join in. So, um, I'll work with, um, Nick on something for that before he.
What other item of finances the, my motion to approve the abstracts, this is.
Second by Cindy, all in favor. There was just one thing, beginning with the secret report, I want to call everyone that projects, you just kind of look at this. But if you recall, um, I find this kind of exciting. There was a 2003 bond that was re-financed in 2012, a lot of that work for certainly the sewer plant was redone. In our most recent 8.4 million dollar upgrade of the wastewater treatment plant, we have the funds in place, this is the worst possible year we could make a payback on. First 10 years of a bond, you cannot. And so we worked with, um, our financing council and we did pay off the sewer portion of that. Otherwise it would have gone for like five or six more years. So all good, we saved the, the village some interest and, um, it sort of clears the slate because we, of course, will be taking a long term debt for the recent. Motion to everything with their present report. And seconded by Anna, all in favor. So just to give some grants and projects update, um, I think we finally have something exciting to say about T E P. Considering the project ended a couple of years ago when we wanted to sort of empty everything out that not much remains in that account. But there was always a bit of a snafu and between the contractor, the engineer and New York State P O T on some recording documents and requirements. And as was noted in the last 12 minutes, it was less than half a percent of an N W B E component. And that really resulted because some aspect of the job or change at the last minute is lead to sort of reconfigure that. So they've all been approved, we're looking forward to the final sign off on that. And that's really important because should, if we want to, you know, what mental wounds, take our advantage of that after that incredible project or deal. Um, we need to have a clean slate and so that we could apply for any of this type of funding. Um. Double day field. On that one, so this. Okay, so the first base building is looking really, really good. You know, it's originally slated to be totally wrapped up. Kind of the need that is difficult. There's always a few last minute things. The last minute things include a mastiff that is being used to put the rubber matting down the corridor and into the entrances to. Lock rooms, the bathrooms, et cetera, was a certain specification. So they've gone back and ordered a slightly different type of mastiff for the rubber matting. And the ceiling of the cement lory, which will take, is what is in the men's and women's bathrooms, the lock rooms and all. That has been delayed a little bit with product, but they are looking at a whole thing, the building being wrapped up. By, it looks like July eighth. So I was saying it might be fun to have some sort of community open house that next week. The same, the village, which is already been a lot of construction, but you feel you've been on known street and also. You know, give everybody a few words of acknowledgement. We probably won't be able to get the granting agencies here. We're looking at more of the, shall I say, the official. Acknowledgement for Empire State Development and our other grants associated with this possibly in August, something a little more. Formal at that time at which, you know, state representatives and all would be included, but this would be sort of. You know, I think everyone's been chomping at the bit to get to see the building. I know we are and I have seen some of it in office. I think the village would be very, very proud of the ability, particularly the bathrooms. It's like, probably wouldn't have done much to get better than the nineteen thirty nine grandstand bathrooms. These are really quite, quite nice, you know. Lotion detecting water things, no paper towel net, hand dryers, ADA compliant. Bathroom as well as one that is an accessibility bathroom. So it still has the rails. I mean, it's nice lock rooms. The lock rooms are not huge, but we have lock rooms and. You know, storage bins, so all very exciting. So let's look at. I'd like to kind of just give some field. I know I have a major commitment on Wednesday thirteen, but. Oh, when Mitch is away, I think we talked about that. It kind of crushes them. Of course, the twenty second of July is the induction. You know, maybe it would be nice, you know, to have something for the community since they're also going to have to deal with induction, maybe Monday the eighteenth. Yeah, let's think of something on that day, discuss that. Mitch will be back and think about, again, probably might be nice. To late afternoon, simply because, you know, after many people's work day and, you know, if any employees want to come over. And work on it. So we'll say for four thirty and. You know how that works, but that would work for board, they pretty much, that would work.
This is important, will the building go operational from the eighth or are we?
We will need to steal the picture of the doctor and save it from the county, but that actually gets a little time. Now, as you all know, we went out to. On the additional. Okay, so number one, I did get an answer on that and I sort of realized that lately home improvement is a looking company. And over the past two years, we've done a section of the water plant roof because it was still large. But this last invoice for twenty four thousand was the last section, roof to pass the water plant and now we have an entirely new roof. Great, thank you.
So this invoice came in today for application for paying the amount of three four thousand dollars.
Motion made by Joe, second by Cindy on favor.
We have a pay invoice number thirty B on H K K in the amount of fourteen hundred thirty one dollars and six cents associated with.
Motion made by Joe, second by Cindy on favor.
There's invoice number three zero eight nine from H K K in the amount of one thousand fifty six thousand nine ninety one cents for the roof or window restoration.
And second by Cindy on favor. I think the only other thing on that is just one second item there was the correspondent. We've already covered the correspondent. Um, addition on the double day field, no, we. Being at the beginning of this year in order to complete the project and find. Make a decision finding leisure company essentially and in. Are those copies are here, right?
Yes, everybody should have received underneath.
I will say, Alec Purman at Delaware Engineering has been working very hard on this. He actually gave a large estimate from G T Grandstand. And, but we were trying to get at least one other company and today we got Dan Clayton. This is a firm that you can see is located in. G T Grandstand is located in Plant City, Florida. Dan Clayton finally kind of put all this together. There is a little more complete in one way and that is, it includes absolutely everything and. I'm hoping you all remember, but I have that here to send you all a picture. Okay, that attached it is, I'm pushing send. So if you want to check your phone, I'm going to be describing, we now have a building that hopefully you all can over there and see the building. But what it's like there is what we call the wing wall and that would be the same brick that you're seeing on the side of the building that comes down the side of bleachers. So if you don't. See this attractive building and suddenly you're looking under the bleachers as much the way we always looked under the first floor, the first base building, the nature. So the wing walls were designed in that when the, that were part of the project that when in order to get the third base going and paid for. We pulled the bleachers, we pulled the wing walls because there was no point in building these and then in some way restricting whatever bleacher company to that. So. When G T first gave a quote, they had included about a hundred thousand for those wing walls and then in their revised quote, we needed one dated more recently. The first bit estimate was only good for thirty days. They withdrew that. So when you're looking at G and T, you're looking at, as you can see. A total of four hundred. Eighty thousand seven thirty plus and all the bleacher seats will have bad rest. So it's a total of five hundred fourteen thousand seven hundred and thirty dollars. It becomes a little hard to compare these because Dan Clayton gives a total figure. They are giving a total figure of nine hundred seventy five thousand and three hundred dollars. But we were unsure of the breakdown. So today, we put a meeting, I received an email that they indicated that five hundred seventy five thousand three hundred is for the bleacher and the bleacher foundation. And four hundred thousand is for the wing walls. The wing walls were designed in part of the value engineering that we did, as you know, we kind of pulled that later. So. We've been debating kind of how to, with Delaware Engineering with Alex, I mean, how do we kind of see, he thinks that four hundred thousand of those two walls are awful. But if we don't, the advantage of Dan Clayton is that if we do it, we don't bid it there. That's part of their contractor. We get it, we get it all. So there is a slight risk if we went for G T Grandstand. That something that was estimated, they estimated a few months ago is a hundred thousand. If we go to bid on it, it could be two hundred thousand, three hundred thousand. First, Alex thinks it's very unlikely it would be over four hundred thousand, which is what is in Dan Clayton. So this is sort of our options here. He did suggest. They got community today, I think that there was. He agrees, it's a little hard to make this, but he said. And I give you the numbers, the breakdown, the four hundred thousand to five seventy three hundred, he says. I still believe this cost. Meaning the Dan Clayton is going to be higher than going through the G T grandstand and bidding of the remaining work. The only, but the only way to ensure that one hundred percent will be to get contractor pricing for this remaining work to compare the two. Please let me know if you mean anything further at this time. I would like to be able to begin moving forward on this because it is, there's going to be a great backlog on this.
The bleachers themselves. And so are they comparable? Because our person, they may be evaluating that part of it over days or.
I think, yeah, for that's the same, we're talking in the, in the. With bad rest, ADA compliant.
Right, I thought, you know, in one respect, there was a difference, which jumped out to me, hundred eighty feet long versus a hundred and two feet long. Yeah, and I just, I just think there's a lot of. Detail here that comparing apple. Was still two hundred thousand dollars difference even when you think of it all.
There is, oh, it's a four hundred sixty thousand, but it's almost half a million, yeah, half a million. So you have to, you have to decide whether we could, you know, do it.
Yeah, what I was trying to do was compare the apples of bleachers to the apples of bleachers and then, you know, the blue wall. Compared those two elements of each.
I feel that that's what the engineer Alex Purman has been doing. And again, I can only give you in the middle of this, you know, for this. We're really, we are talking four hundred and sixty thousand more and that more is essentially to bring the wing wall. They're just separate almost standing, think of them as almost cosmetic, you know, they just nicely address the edge of the work. We can certainly go through this. We, I do not want to wait till the end of July because we need to steer in on something here. And all I can read to you again in last time, I still believe this cost. A Dan Clayton is going to be higher than going through. The G T grandstand and bidding of the remaining work. The only way to ensure that one hundred percent will be to get contractor pricing for this remaining work to compare the two. And, you know, we can certainly say we approved G and T contingent on that. I suppose if we could do that. But again, the total for G T is five hundred fourteen thousand seven thirty. You subtract that from nine seventy five, three hundred thousand, you're, you are talking four hundred sixty thousand. We have, you have to, and to change, we can build two wing walls. And when it's engineers, it is simply design points, that's not just about the structure. Like a structure, but Dan Clayton is willing to hire a tub and do that. B E is not, it would be something that we would hire and we would be, have to coordinate.
Well, so coming back to. Why would we use?
Because it was old from.
I don't understand that, but in terms of, I don't understand the benefit of having them get a subcontractor. With these associated costs and, you know, the sun changes from subcontractor, we ourselves.
Yeah, it's cheaper. It's generally cheaper for us to.
Right, and if, I mean, we know this company, we know they finish our building, so I.
You're talking on clock.
Yes.
On clock. It was told from the.
I understand that, but if we're going to bid it out, why can't we bid it?
We certainly, they, they welcome to, we learned kind of through this and I will say it was very happy. We were a tiny project. They immediately left and they're doing like an eight million dollars, ten million dollars. They moved a lot of capital district, district. Built and they left, they armed back to our contractor on, I don't know, whatever he was, Ron, I can't think, he was absolutely delightful on the scene. Individual organizing everything. He had, actually two weeks ago to begin the burn, it was job and, you know, we're small potatoes. Will they come back for something that could be two hundred thousand? I don't know.
All I'm saying is, these guys who seem to know exactly what they're doing with the little wickers, just seemed to me that we, they'll be casting around. At some cost, but I was.
Oh, so you, you were, what you are saying is we, we would utilize Delaware Engineering, the, the wing wall design that was already in our construction drawing. And go separately on that with G T grandstand. I'm just trying to.
Yeah, I'm trying to, I, I, well, if you need it, I don't know, my point is. That I don't think either of these guys should be there in general contract. I think that's what we said. And the, or the specific, they're going to have to, Dan is going to have to sub it out and we would do it as a sub. So we just want to cross that and do it. Having. And, and you say that the numbers here are, we, we are comparing five hundred seventy five thousand dollars for bleachers from Dan's and five hundred fourteen thousand.
For bleachers from G T, yeah, so the balance.
So it's, yeah, it's.
Four hundred thousand.
And so these folks are ninety thousand dollars more.
I have a question.
No, go ahead, I'm, I'm.
So why do we not have to go with you?
Well, I, I contacted, they didn't, they got back to me today at four fifty, excuse me, four forty two. I had asked you. Ellen and I met, I. And they purportedly are on state contract too. Uh, I didn't know about the, uh, G T.
We don't, we think G T is.
They are telling me that they are gonna get in touch with me tomorrow, sorry guys. Um, they tell me that they, uh, they, they, that we'll be in touch with you, we'll be able to satisfy any and all of your concerns. Um, this process is totally legal, and he will be in touch with you sometime tomorrow morning. This is in response to my inquiry, I wanted something in writing.
Now, I just could be kind of, I'm in the Google, they contacted, and no, nature, and no one.
So that raises my next question, wing wall. I just think we could have to bid.
Oh, we have, and therefore. You could, you're saying to do it.
No, I don't know that we can, don't state contracts with features. I'm not sure that they can do, you know what I'm saying? I, I'm not sure.
Yeah, the state contract, as I understand it, is for features. If I can see, if I can get confirmation, you were hung out, so I had contacted the owner who was contacting G T, I didn't know, he didn't, I did not see anything in writing. Yeah, and that one I wasn't even aware of, but G T, I hadn't seen anything in writing that confirmed it. Dave Olman threw me saying that it's, it's pretty clear to him, based by his conversations with G T, that they're compliant, but I wanna see something in writing. He's going to purportedly be owner of G T, is gonna contact me tomorrow to prove to me, provide me proof, I should say, that they are compliant through the state contract. Just for, for few moments sake, we don't have to go out to bid, state of New York has determined that certain bidding by certain companies is acceptable. For instance, something like features where areas you are features, this is the low price that the state has got, because they're the big dog in the fight. They say if you match ours, we will accept the fact that you don't have to go out and bid, you can, but you have to find it on the state contract. I couldn't find this, and what I want is something that confirms they are state contract compliant. If they are, you don't have to let them.
That is true. And so I, but I don't know if they start working in areas outside of, there's probably contract area.
I mean, my guess would be no. I don't know how they, it wouldn't be part of the state contract, that's for sure. And at that point, I don't know how we're not reviewing that.
Yes, these dollars tonight, but what, um, if they, if they, if they have, like, you know, because they're on the contract list and they're just farming out a component, that's why they didn't give us that, and we finally throw, um, that down.
So this one, the Dan is on source, though, which is.
Yeah. So, um, I think probably, again, we cannot wait another month. Um, I would like to, these are the only two after about five months we've been trying to come up with. Both, and the one you came in today, but we could do that if we get, you know, and we want at least two. I think we all have some questions. Let's get some questions answered, but, um, I would love a motion, but I just need to proceed depending on those answers. We can't really take a load by email, but could G T be on a state contract with? That's one possibility. We could also try and get a little more information on what the contractor, um, as he said, what the contract price might be for those two wing walls, and that would be applicable, you know, to this one. We can try and, and then have a meeting, another vote. Um.
Sure, I'm, I'm, I'm able to especially.
Yeah, I think we, it's the only way you can do it.
The thing that gives me about this, is that, right, if, if we know exactly how the wing wall is with with the features types of protection, oh, for example, if there's that five foot difference in, in the two bids, in length of features, how are we, how are we gonna deal with that when we?
That's why the wing walls were not built and they were pulled, because the sequence that is for theme is that the north wing wall would be built, and the bleachers, and then you would put your south wing wall on. That's why, and we're even getting in there, you couldn't have these wing walls that within which, I mean, they are essentially, which comes first, you know? You gotta work at this place, and that is the kind of approach that this, this pays now.
But it would be good if they suggested confirm that that number is.
That the difference.
Alex, that their number is.
I mean, I. Which number?
The length.
So we're talking a difference of five feet.
Right, well, and, and all I'm saying is, you, you want that thing, but you don't want it to have exactly the area.
But that's why the wing wall, they're building up to the north one, and they're going down, so if they're like five feet, they'll just, they'll bend more. You switch back with the, with the show. Well, then it would probably, it's, it's a wing wall upside, and they would be adjusting. The wing walls will be built for the specific features, that's why wing walls were not built out prior, because it would depend on what they are. So how critical, the question is, how critical are five feet?
Well, if there's one, that makes more sense. Five feet. Especially if it's too long.
Yeah. Yeah. Then had the, um, construction drawings with the wing walls and, you know, a back simile of the features in there to work from, so, and with all the dimensions, so they certainly knew what they were doing. All right, so we will try and get a few more answers and, um, we'll have a meeting on Monday is the fourth of July. Yeah, I know, it's definitely on your mind. Um, let's tentatively schedule something for Tuesday or fifth, and have all the answers. There are times of day that works better for people, morning, early morning.
I can't do early morning, I think, but even that means.
If, if, as long as it's before, before.
Then that morning, afternoon, that's the.
Morning.
Morning, okay. Well, let's tentatively put eight A M on July fifth, and Marcia can do the minutes. Um, but let's just get something on there and let the other trustees know about when they, they are able to make it.
Not just in the calendar, but also I can send.
So that we can approve, let's be, already. All right.
And Alex is the fellow group is comparing the apples to the features, he's fine with the G T.
Yes, I read you busy.
First hand, you have to go to the red wing wall, is that something that we can?
We would do that, uh, because that, again, will. All right. I was still.
Oh, yeah, I'll see.
So I think that was here, grocery culprits, I think, might get lost.
So the current business process, that couple day has been out of call, but the reason is that the building line needs to be moved. I think it's a bit long, I wonder has it been there long? I believe Bassett moved their lines today, and we are waiting on Spectrum. I know. Spectrum has come and looked, looked. We are hoping that, that, um, the, the unfortunate part of this delay is that it was supposed to be done on July fifteenth, and it's already up before it actually begins. I was not really.
Will they be submitting a, an extension?
Um, I would assume so, I think that maybe waiting for these ones, Spectrum, is actually gonna show up.
And maybe they could have done it July fifteenth. No, well, if, if they are having any extension, we should prove that it.
I think it's a question of how it's launched, and then it's. Yeah, if Spectrum is coming next week, that's one thing, if Spectrum is coming at the beginning of August, then it's probably.
Is it over yet, Molly?
Do they need to know later, I'm just thinking that we're, we're not gonna meet before their, their time runs out.
Well, I'm, I'm.
That's what I'm saying, so if they can have something, but if, yeah. Now we're adding things to this agenda of this meeting, I promise you with each. Um, but anything else on that, or do you wanna talk about my next?
Um, otherwise, yeah, I, I know, see that my call was, is, is, and our minutes. Um, so Glen Avenue has been, I think there's a little word rating that the knowing ways to do that. But, um, there is now a nice path that you can walk.
It's kind of like.
Um, this does say that Delaware is still hopeful for a completion using the induction. So they're asking for.
I think they'll speak something.
Um, is everything done?
Um.
Wonderful, so next month's meeting, we'll receive a final payback for that, or if I do not get it, just go, I think today, just wanna brush the review of it.
Oh, how many years when we can say downtown Wi-Fi content? Um, I want you to know, this is the folder. Um, we thought we were pretty much moving ahead, about, um, a month ago. Um, Mintel came and the unit, and I may have alluded to this last month, that are incredibly backward, they're backward and we're. Um, so they tried to come up with, if there were another unit, and they found one they thought could work, based on, you know, the dimensions, et cetera, and they ordered it, it was a slightly different antenna, but it was round and platter, so in some ways it wouldn't be a regular box, you know? That's just one component, that the antenna, which would be attached to our lamppost, then there's an access point. And you remember, they're running the conduit along, along the lamppost. When the access point arrived, it does not fit in the, of the lamp. So that does no longer work, so they thought, is there a way then? We utilize, but they got the line now down the north side of Main Street, because they use the, um, let, uh, spotlight pole and put a unit up there, now that they have ability to get there, and a unit further down Main Street. They had mentioned the fly hole, and I said, you can't touch the fly. So they have done building assessments, they went to the Hall of Fame, which, if you've been up on, looking at the skyline or anything on our roof, you know, they have a ton stuff back there, it's a roof hall, so rocks off and it, and, and it's too much of a shadow, so that area does not work. They went up to the corner of this building, um, where there's already like a fleeceed antenna, et cetera, and have taken measurements, but the, the, um, schematics are not there. They know the one on, um, the spotlight post would reach pretty far, they just need one that's sort of at this end. But we have a big tree out front, which restricts it a bit. So the thought is that that could work, and he's getting back, um, as soon as those charts are in showing the Wi-Fi distribution, using those access points it might move forward.
Well, question, it's called the downtown Wi-Fi project, is everything gonna be on Main Street, or are they doing Pioneer?
There'll be some village into it, but, um, in fact, the one up, um, on the stoplight will actually go a bit, um, just enough. But it's just kind of village that way. It's really downtown.
Nothing which, which.
Um, right, it'll definitely be Pioneer Park, we'll have our Pioneer Park on our mind. Yeah. So that's that one, elevator replacement project.
The elevator continues to be fabricated, and we're waiting for. Yeah, it got, it got pushed back, which one today? Yeah, and I'm not very aware.
Um, fault shift, or, um, can we have a bit of, and then you have, um, what you say, and you have to report on that?
Um, this is, if this, I have a little concern with escalating prices, whether this project is still going to be completed or not. Do you want to open it?
I'll open it until Wednesday. First water treatment in that project, of course, we've completed the, the, the project, I mean, we are still, you know, doing a few things down there. I did wanna get you up to date on two grants, we had two Sam's grants for, um, our water treatment grant, we had a two million dollar from former assemblymen in the late building in D. That one, um, I've gotten to the point where we've got a grant disbursement agreement, we have submitted two debts need for reimbursement. They came back and they said, we, you know, copy of that council check, and we supplied everything off, so we're hoping that one will come soon. Um, we're having more difficulty, shall I say, with, um, former Senator Stewart's, um, Sam, two million dollar Sam grant, and, um, it's still being held up for a final budget approval. So I just wanna let you know that, should that not come in in September, we have to begin the paperwork with environmental facilities support, which has been basically supporting our project, underwriting our project, holding the ban for our project. We have to begin that paperwork in September, and the figures will be in it. If we cannot secure that, we would have to probably take a dam to get for the two million, it's felt like these funds will come eventually, but, um, there are delays, shall I just say, in the political activities going on, and, um, so we would have to ban the two million to pay it E F C, because once we get that paperwork, and it's being solidified, and it's a bond, we cannot pay it back for ten years, so we can't simply throw two million at it next year, it'll be too late. So all I can say is I've got notes and files going back to November that I've been working on this, and, um, I have a lobbyist working on this, I have many people working on this, and we're. Focal, but I think we do need to recognize and I think I'll have a clearer sense of that. Um, in July, then we may have to ban. Which is unfortunate. That's, that's great. But we're really, I mean, he is moving forward. So that's great. All right, um, board reports. First board.
Yeah. Um, so two things of note. Um, the first is the buffer strip. I talked to Lake Valley Garden Club. They sort of made them aware of this group relations. Um, I think they will be writing us with an updated plant list tomorrow. Um, they have met with practice and a couple of clients have. Sort of committed to making sure that all of the plants are either not going to grow above a certain height or are mainly able enough to that. Even if there was a little bit of a lack, they wouldn't explode and turn into a jungle. Um, because I think everyone knows that the Lakefront first. Um, that would be good for everyone involved. Um, the things I wanted to bring up about. Um, the, the buffer strip are that Lake Valley Garden Club wants to sort of make sure that we are aware that they're committed to being able to, um. Uh, maintain the buffer strip in the spring and the fall. It will really be like the summer months, but they are hoping the village will be able to take over. Um, and again, that is. Uh, something that we're working on in two weeks, let's say, until I made a schedule. Um, some of their money in the budget for maintaining the buffer strip. And I wanted to sort of gauge and support the, well, the hiring and care teacher for July and August. Um, while that is being, um. Yeah, put together. So, so essentially the reason that that would need to happen and the reason why this year there might be a care teacher that is, is needed. Um, is because Mount Vision. They're not replacing all of the plants. They're not doing a digital full uprooting. And so they have, they, um, commit to a year or two years of maintaining the plants that they put in. So they have a team of people that will come to the buffer strip and read and make sure that the plants that they put in. Are growing and healthy and everything, but it's the plants that they sort of left or moved around, but that they didn't bring in themselves that would need. Extra attention. Um. And I, you know, we do have money in the budget for that, for the maintenance buffer strip. Um, and I wanted to.
Would, I just lose time. Would the incremental cost be best? As, as, as vicious people, you're anyway, I mean, there's nothing on the planet. Right. And it's the balance, especially if they're making transplantations move.
Yeah.
It just means. You get a price. From them.
Yeah.
That's right.
Yeah. So the other problem is that. If they weren't willing or able to commit to sort of continuing that care. Like, um, you know, Mount Vision, if they weren't able to say, oh, well, sort of take over the, the other plants as well for the summer. Um, is there, are there thoughts on potentially putting out a call for, for, you know, extremely part-time. Care taker of that area?
Uh, so this, but you're saying that it's just in July and August? And that would be just this year. So, and it would be just because these would be all new planting or tran, moved planting. They would need intensive care, because I'm not sure we could commit five thousand every year going forward to the plant. In the buffer strip. So I'm just wondering where it could get.
Well, I think that where we're getting is that this year it is, it's, you know, it's maybe not, not the only thing to worry about. And then we can use this. Summer and full year to maybe make like create a maintenance schedule among. Village organizations, service organizations. And our friends in the parks have already talked to the Lake, uh, Garden Club and our interest committee. Setting up a day to do a cleanup. They've done cleanup for others first and they haven't really. Done, as far as I know, in the past years, they haven't done a lakefront park cleanup. Um, and so that would be one option. Um. But yeah, I mean, it would be ideal if there could be someone that on a very part-time basis comes in and is able to be. And sort of maintain those tensions because. They aren't able to commit to the summer months. They just don't have the manpower.
Um, I think so is the judgment, the first prime nomination, see if they will. And if not, I think. As opposed to our advertising, trying to hire someone and, you know, from, obviously not be good. Um, and then we'd have to train them. We'd have to train the mountain or something. We might wanna consider maybe naming this thing Lamb's Creative Conference. So I, I think I'll take that approach rather than hiring an employee. So, yeah, first choice, Mount Vision, second choice.
Yeah, and I, I know that, um. This space of this, I'll be hopefully providing an updated plant list into a timeline, I think, tomorrow, so that we can get. Um, I can maybe inquire them from here. He was. I know that they have new thoughts. Um, what's my name for? Yeah. Um.
Garden Club.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Um, and so, I mean, that would be, it would be nice to have, you know, not have to train anyone. There's certainly money in the budget for this year. The other thought that I had brought up in the meeting. Was potentially thinking about that. Right, I know, for, um. For replacing or updating the, uh. Four block. These are very slippery. Like, excluding, uh, I mean, if there are other permeable materials, that was the goal, the four blocks that weren't available. That may be available now, would be a better option. Yeah. Yeah, yeah. Um, so I think that everyone's looking at, but I know, I was, I was over there before, early in the morning.
Was it June Sunday?
Yeah, I was like, yeah, like right.
The whole idea of the. The science being selected with those categories might not just.
Yep, yep. Well. I got, I'll be in the box. Um, so they're basically working with a, like, you know, discussing the, the types of plants and then entering a thousand and a big, small pipe can be started and I quality. So my thesis is. All suggestion about volunteers moving forward. It is easier to have the same group of people that raises with the rain, that is volunteer on a consistent basis. Than every week or even every month. It has a major vote. Yes, it's volunteers there where you're driving. Yeah. Yeah. Um, so I, we talked about that. I'm, I'm working with them to sort of make those connections. The folks that we've talked to are interested in doing, they're, they're interested in like a, a day, having a day. And that's like that stage of commitment. Um, a way to maybe make it easier moving forward. And I've talked to. Um, Lake Valley Garden Club and they're sort of gonna work with Mount Vision as well is to maybe come up with, like, once we have that plant. You know, come up with a care guide that, that all the organizations that are involved have that, that they're not having to get someone from the Garden Club. Come in and do a demonstration of that, you know, so it doesn't become a whole entire, um, conference of planting. And rather it could actually be something that, um. So that, that's a possibility. I think it's gonna be working progress. And I, I made it very clear that. If this becomes really difficult to maintain in the way that it is after these plantings and if, you know, a few years down the line, we don't have money in the budget. To hire a care taker or hire a landscaper and we can't figure it out, but we'll have to make calls for her back for. Keeping it in those working areas in the public. Um. It's a little, but I think it was. It was, I mean, it's, you know, there's only so much that I remember. Um, yeah, I think I, I remain on. I don't know. Okay. So there's that and then the, um, the dog park. Um, but I got your email, I got it from school and that was kind of what I was thinking. Um. Essentially, the portion of the land that we're thinking of is actually both park foundation and school. Um, and they have a no dogs policy.
A school dog.
A school dog, right. So I guess that puts that a little bit, but I'm, you know. I won't do that. Um, and my, I, my question is that, I know with the, the. Baseball field, is that, is that a plan that's happening or is that?
It was always a plan. Um, the leadership and the people I be, um, changed. And it'd be more amenable now. Um, there is a lot of feeling in the community that, you know, we're hometown of baseball. We don't have a youth baseball field. We always did. Um, obviously everyone from Cooperstown now drives over to Hartwick and, and plays on those fields. Um, uh, only fair. A lot of people from Hartwick drive to Cooperstown to do certain things. But in the plan, um, and that is the reason that those easements were written for, um. Um, open space recreation and recreation facilities, because they were actually envisioning bleachers and, you know, refreshments and, and all that. I, you have the picture of what it was supposed to be. Um, those are plans. Um, the Cooperstown one, that was. Essentially where the dog park would go was, um, we are, there was gonna be a batting area and a storage shed. Um, and it's largely eighty percent on school property and about twenty percent on, um.
So from what I understand is that this portion. Like down here.
Correct.
Is on somebody.
Correct.
And this portion here is.
Cool.
Um. Yeah, so, and.
So where you're having this behind the snowshoe. Very.
Right. Does anyone follow my, remember the, well, that's my question. Is that, is this, you know, is this plan? Are they moving forward with the baseball field?
It is my understanding that the, the, the situation is such that the property owners. Easements are only for recreation and the school itself doesn't allow dogs. So somehow it has to move. You look at the topography there, you can tell that that, the contour line. That basically area of fill anyway, it, it drops off precipitately. So it's not like it can even go further than the outfield.
Um, yeah, well. Theoretically, I'm not trying to move all of it. But if you move this baseball field more towards where the dog park is and you put the dog park here and had a long pathway. It wouldn't be on school property and it wouldn't be on the park foundation. And the school would just have to allow. People to, people to walk through, which I don't know if they are aware, but every small time that I park over here, there's a leash to people running their dog on leash. In that area. So it's a matter of if it's controlled. Or if while it's an open field, which it seems like it hasn't for quite some time, um, people are just. I have seen people with leather dog tops, they're not gonna catch them as well, which is not what we want, um, for anyone, because they think that.
Unless the outfield is totally where those contour lines are, either gray. It really can't go further. Out.
You mean here?
Yeah.
I don't think it would be. It would be, because when, when Mitch and Mama and I went out there, we realized that the amount of land that we have.
When you were living in two acres.
Right.
I'm like, oh, wow. That's a big yard.
It doesn't, yeah, it's, it doesn't, but it is, like, not. You wouldn't be able to create. Field. It would just be cut out. And there are going to be almost.
Where does the allowance for moving it, because I was really involved with the, that has a very extensive lining of. Uh, it has drainage. It has all our, the electrical lines for the park. And hookups for water and sewer all, it really came close to fruition, but there were some hard feelings between the leadership. Of the Cooperstown Youth Baseball and they felt that it had been somewhat heavy-handed. And despite the fact that we spent about eighty thousand dollars on having the right soil, the right drainage, the right lining. And everything in the, we'd installed the electric and run the water and sewer at tremendous cost. They decided to go to earth. I can tell you there are a number of groups that have, and have begun to talk, begun talking about. Um, I've been there as legal counsel, trying to raise funds to put a dog, or excuse me, a baseball field in. So the problem with moving it is right under where you're seeing that field. Is what, oh, there is where we did all the lining and all the piping that came there. The other real problem, quite honestly, because it came very close to being a tennis, tennis facility. Is the owners, you need to get permission from the owners. And I know that one of the ways that it's sold to the owners. Particularly the heart foundation, it kind of came to our rescue and put funds in and gave us their, the, the easement for the property. But it was gonna be a baseball field to replace the public field we had taken to make our park. Can I ask this question? There's this prohibition on dogs. I mean, I get, but this. Can, is that something that could be worked with? Because this isn't taking your dog to school.
Right. As if I were going to the school.
Can that be negotiated or?
That was what I was thinking. I, I just, I just thought, I mean, I'm. Um, so I think all the group. Um, and I, it's said, even, you know. That the statement states, um, the property that would not be allowed on the land, that any time, um, prior arrangements would be made of those or the court or internal versus.
As, as soon as they do bring, um, the real dog, uh, statement on dog, just so the kids see that.
The dog park.
Thing you have to think about here, but I know you've wanted a letter of support, but it would be like. The town of Millilfield writing a letter of support for putting a wingstead in Lakefront Park. They, the village of Cooperstown, this is not village property and you're talking about the expenditure. You know, there will be expenses. So really talk to the town, but see though, because it will be their liability insurance for a dog park. There will be, if there are any maintenance costs, it would fall under their construction and, um. You know, building zoning permits, whatever there is. It, 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 I, we can certainly say we like the idea, but, um. We have no jurisdiction on this property. Felt that out. Felt that out, yes.
I didn't live with. Yeah, I know. Um, but, yeah, and, and part of that is, I'd be great, as a school major, but obviously, I don't think it's going to happen. Do on the third, if you require a letter, like, you have to upload a letter from the municipality, saying, we're in.
And the property owner.
And the property owner, so, um. So, right, definitely, um, I mean, I kind of figured that out anyway, and I think that's fine, there's a lot of support for the principal part of this, of the project to actually go forward with, that they would help this stuff, and we already, you know, put some, some, a rating plan um, for something like this, it's just a matter of finding out if it makes sense. In this area, I have a copulaire area, I, I mean, I I know that up until now, it seems like it's impossible to put a dog park here, but I'm just wondering if there's any way, I don't know if that means talking to Sarah Frost, um, which I would be happy to do, um. But I just, I feel like this is such an underutilized area, and I know that if there was, if there was a testing area for, for, for these, they had, as they already are.
If they already are.
Anything if they're for as a dog park. Yes.
The other thing is, if there's any other, um. In the.
If anything that would make sense goes because it's so close to their home, or because it's too close to water sources.
Yeah, the only thing that was popping up in my mind, and that would be a whole other conversation, with one of those landlords, the plan, um. They were, before they moved to Harcourt, um, it was a proposal for some property, and broken now, and that is the end or that is the end of the village. Well, there is a wetland area that goes beyond that, where they farm, where they grow.
Because it goes up, you know, that, there were contracts signed after you, baseball didn't want to go here. They changed game forward and offered space for two fields of there, but they had already made their decision to move dog. So that's, that's a possibility that.
Yeah, I, I was gonna say, there actually has to be some other property.
Then, we're not, um, you know, you're welcome to speak to Sarah Frost, I mean, she was pretty adamant about it, I do know why that policy is in place, there, you know, there was a lot of abuse, and they literally would have to do Hoover's two patrols before soccer games and softball games, and it was abused, unfortunately, it gets abused. Right, yeah, and there's a difference, it's a fence-in one.
Yeah.
But the, as the plan kind of exists, and again, it would have to be the consent of both those property owners, so I think they're, um, of course, here. Um, so I was just trying to think if there was any village prop, village areas based, and that's the only one I could come up with.
In the book, do I have any property that there'd be a parking issue? Well, where are the people? But I don't think it's. I know, because on someone, James, I changed, so you can't pull.
Yeah, these are all things to work out, yeah. Anything else on parks?
Oh, oh, there is, is it, is it a new one, that's supposed to be?
Yeah, that's supposed to be.
Yeah, uh.
Do you have any suggestions? Expressed interest?
I haven't, I, I don't know if I, no one's expressed interest, um, I don't know. I know someone that would be interested in part four, but. Uh, I'm happy to start. Start failing myself, yeah. Yeah.
It's one question on the council, I mean, the signature. That's been, I thought last one. So. It's, there's, this law has been signing.
Yeah, yeah. It's, um. Yeah, just two months ago. Yeah, okay, my. I don't remember the word anymore, um, yeah, so they're, uh, this has been moving forward, I know there's, uh, that Will Walker is working on a health plan for, um. What that would look like in a council rock, but the bird we had, that sort of thing. That's important.
Really, I thought it was suspended, the last meeting we had with Will Walker, he said it was, was.
There was, there was, but I think that continue researching and have, um.
I haven't seen it yet.
I, I will, I.
It was in the last month's.
Yeah.
I literally.
A month ago, I was.
I took the letters that were back in the board.
Joe, I will, um, I have it right here, I will present it to you, it was, it was one of some brief thing on, on potential council rock, and then it discussed basically, you know, island. But I was, I will go net off again, it was, uh, I think we all got it in, uh, at the meeting.
Right, I remember that, that I thought was, that, that was a work that he was just beginning to do on the middle island. But council rock, I thought was, I don't mean council rock, I mean, the, the stolen campaign part, that was, like, the, the.
There's nothing, they're done with sort of the signs that are there, there's a team app, and they, and then interpret it, sign just to the right, very similar to like, the G I G P sign on our main street. And, um.
All the poetry, I'm trying to, and actually, I thought it was gone away, and it was still.
Yeah, I think, first, there was, I think, just me.
All right.
Oh, Diane, no, how? And who we could actually say that was in the councilal territory, um, I think that has been then sort of figured out, um, and he's been working with baseball, or Darren, Darren, and Phil Stern, I know they both grew.
Thanks.
Um. I don't think there's anything. Mentioned with any questions.
Um, motion to accept the first one, move, move by Cindy, stated by Joe, all in favor? Hi, um, or your review, are the water should supervise, um, committee, next? We have water and sewer.
Right, and we just have to assume, assume water and sewer, if you will. And I think that is really why, that, um. You, you'll see on the back of the minutes, the new business discussion, um. Might be our, 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 our. Thank you. Um, the, the actual installation, acquisition, selection, will be a much more expensive project, and this, 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 and even that cost would be somewhat mitigated by that. This is a council meeting, just to, you know, we're, we're. And we'll find out with that stuff. Um, and, and other than the, 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 it's retired, and, uh, it's all the.
Well, we need to approve.
Yeah, so, I'll make a motion to approve Delaware Engineering's proposal at eighty-five hundred dollars to complete engineering study and C M A application.
I can buy Joe, all in favor? Thank you. All right, and we need to accept the water and sewer report. And then we have a, 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 um, new hires, um, Google hire lifeguards, we have, um. Let me start, I need them in different order here. Lifeguard, we have Owen Manning, um, lifeguard at fourteen twenty-five an hour. And, um, there we have, Ben Noza, um, lifeguard at thirteen fifty an hour. Frederick Hodgson, lifeguard at fifteen twenty-five an hour, I move that we, um, so. I was, second by Joe, all in favor? We also have, um, uh, two seasonal labors for the streets department, very exciting, you can go home and find those Matt and Kalipo, um, at the rate of fifteen dollars an hour, and Mike Hulley at fifteen dollars an hour, and the, um, hiring of those two seasonal labors. By Cindy, by Cindy, all in favor? And then, um, uh, we have a caretaker for three mile, um, and that is a seasonal by a lamb, saying, I move that we hire, um, our three hundred point.
Okay.
Um, second, all in favor? And we have a invoice from chat group for adding the wiring as light in the boardroom. That's beautiful, um, and it's about two thousand four hundred twenty-nine dollars, thirty-one percent. Second by Joe, all in favor? There's one other thing that we need to do, we need to declare the three lights, um, that's not much to be, um, crackling in here, but the three, um, nineteen fifteen lights that were in the hallway to declare them. So, who's by, in a second by, um, in a, all in here. And this was kind of, it's into the process then, for, we don't really want to do a legal notice, because there's probably nine and three decent on that, but we, um, will probably, um, announce it on our Facebook page and a, or on our website or something like that. All right, and we, we're just the board this time, it was very nice, we, we're getting a nice group of people, ask questions, and really want to know. Um, so, our, we technically said our next question, we enjoyed it, yeah, 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 and we have the line, we, we, the high twenty-fifth at six thirty, yeah, there's nothing else. Yeah, we published an advertised business, we should make that one, too. Let's say that, water and.
To advertise for a, for the, the, that table. They water.
Operator, operator. Second, all in favor? Thank you. All right, um, meeting.
Okay. And. It's, I'll be there.
What you want.
Yeah, and you know what, is, that I was gonna say, it's.